So, good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting of the State Board of Education to order. I want to welcome the Board of Public Education members and the Regents, members of the public. Dylan, could you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you, Governor. We'll start with the Board of Regents, Regent Lozar.
President.
Regent Bowe.
Excuse.
Excuse, yeah.
Regent Buchanan.
Present.
Regent Dombrowski.
Present.
Regent Neiston.
I'm here.
Regent Rogers.
Here.
And Regent Sexton.
Here.
Moving on to the Board of Public Education, Board Member Schottl.
Present.
Board Member Lacy.
Present.
Board Member Quinlan.
Present.
Board Member Hedlin.
Here.
Board Member Keith.
Here.
Board Member Hammond.
Present.
And Board Member Heller.
Present.
Superintendent Aronson.
Good afternoon.
Commissioner Christian.
I'm here, thank you.
And Governor Gianforte is present, there is a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Dylan. I'll start with an update. It's good to be here, thank you for hosting us, President Bodnar. It's even better to be here just before the brawl of the wild.
Right.
So, we're all excited about that. And this is really the football game of the season that we've all been waiting for. So far this year, I flipped the coin at a game at Carroll. I did one at Tech, I did, I had the honor with the Bobcats last week. And I'm proud to report that so far, every time I've flipped the coin, the home team has won. So, that bodes well for the Grizz. While I can't guarantee they're going to win, however, tomorrow I'll be rooting for Montana. But it's really been an honor to visit some of your university campuses this year and some of the K-12 schools across the state. I just finished up my 56-county tour, getting to all counties again this year. I got to welcome kiddos back to school at Frenchtown Elementary. When school got kicked off, I was with some of the lunch heroes in Montana City at the elementary school there. Got to recognize Statehood Day with the students at Prickly Pear Elementary. I was, got to learn about the CTE programs at East Helena High School, what a beautiful facility that is, brand new, just a couple of years old. Visit with the new leadership at Western, I enjoyed that visit. Had dinner with some of the leaders in Glendale from Dawson College and some of the students there. I got up to Northern to tour the Diesel Mechanics facility again, that was, I think, my third or fourth visit there. And I also got down and spent an afternoon at Highlands College. So, it's just good to see the work that you're all doing across the state. Really helps me a lot to get out and get face-to-face with folks because it's no surprise that truce doesn't live in Helena all the time. So, turning to today's meeting, I'm glad to be here and discuss some of the strategic plans that we will build a brighter, more prosperous future for Montana students. We've seen, unfortunately, heavy-handed mandates out of Washington, DC that really threaten our schools and students. I'll continue to stand up against them. Many state officials and education leaders in the state have joined me in this effort, and I thank them for that. I want to also recognize the Montana School Board Association. The association took a stand for our kids and Montana parents who should be involved in their kids' education. I encourage our other education associations to evaluate their contracts with national organizations to ensure their membership is in the best interest of Montana and the families. Parents, teachers, and local school boards make the best, most informed decisions about education, not Washington, DC bureaucrats or special interest groups. With that said, I'll continue working with Superintendent Aronson and our congressional delegation to rescind the CDC illegal mask mandate on school buses. Also, continue working with Attorney General Knutson to prevent vaccine mandates which are illegal in Montana. While I continue to encourage Montanans to get, consult their healthcare provider and get vaccinated, they should do so voluntarily, not under an edict that has not been passed through the legislative process. No individual in Montana should face discrimination in provision of services, employment, or access to the classroom based on their vaccination status. As we remain united in our efforts to overcome the pandemic, I want our schools to know the state is here to help. DPHHS has, still has large amounts of funding available for schools to help with COVID-19 testing. If there is a need, please reach out. If districts are interested in this funding, just reach out to DPHHS or through Dylan in our office, we're happy to connect you. Under the leadership of Director Meyer at DPHHS, the department stands ready to help you all create an effective learning environment for all of our students. I also encourage districts and campuses still enforcing mandates, mask mandates, to evaluate the impact these mandates have on young Montanans and the learning environment. Ultimately, masking is a decision that should be left to the individual students and families, not public officials. Like all Montanans, I was devastated to see the record-high depression rates in the 2021 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and I believe masks continue to contribute to this depression and suicide. We have, there are consequences of our actions. It's a reminder, we must continue to do all we can to ensure our students are properly cared for and prepared for a successful future. As we look forward to student success, depends on classroom innovation, individualized learning, work-based learning, and attracting high-quality educators. That's why I'm proud to report that we've been making great progress on a number of these fronts. I signed the Teach Act into law earlier this year, which is focused on helping local school boards increase starting teacher pay, which should make a difference. We have the unfortunate distinction of being 50th in the country in starting teacher pay, and we need to move the needle on this. Soon, we'll be investing nearly $4 million to support schools' advancement in technology, distant learning, and professional development. We also created a new position at the Department of Labor and Industry with, whose sole focus is to foster partnerships with education and industry leaders to expand workforce development opportunities for students and employers. I want to thank the superintendent for her contribution of Sarah Swanson to do that job at Department of Labor and Industry, thank you. To that end, I've also charged Department of Labor and Industry with expanding jobs for Montana graduates in every school in Montana. JAG is a tremendous program that helps at-risk students succeed. It's not, it's just not enough schools in Montana right now. In addition, because of the potential impact of JAG, I have accepted an invitation to join their National Board, and we're looking forward to working with you to roll it out in all the schools. I'm also encouraged that the Board of Public Ed and OPI continue to focus on expanding flexibility in licensure and accreditation. This is an important effort to make sure we have the best teachers in the classroom. Like our K-12 schools, there's a lot of great news coming out of the Montana university system. First, MUS enrollment is up, this is something we ought to be celebrating. Not only that, but Native American enrollment in the university system is up as well, this is also something to celebrate. Enrollment is bouncing back, which is due in part to your innovative, outside-the-box work, and I just applaud you for that. After this, I'm heading over to Missoula College to view firsthand their partnership with ATG Cognizant to develop a workforce talent pipeline. And President Bodnar, I really applaud your visionary leadership with Accelerate Montana here at U of M. This program should be replicated across the entire MUS system so that we can help Montana businesses and industries better meet their chronic workforce needs. I also believe Accelerate Montana and other public-private partnerships like Build Montana hold the key to reversing the troubling downward trends in enrollment at our two-year campuses. And I, just speaking very frankly for a second, given the desperate, skilled workforce shortages we have across Montana in construction, the trades, manufacturing, restaurants, in virtually every industry in the state, and the continual declines in enrollment on our two-year campuses, I can only conclude that we have a fundamental disconnect between our delivery method on these two-year campuses and the needs of our employers and students. I'm encouraging you, let's reinvent ourselves in a way that matches more closely the skills gaps with the educational offerings that we have. Every industry in Montana needs both short- and long-term training, and I call on our two-year campuses to innovate, just like Missoula College has done with their Accelerate Montana program. I'd like to see more of these types of partnerships in every campus. It also represents an additional funding resource for higher ed because these employers are willing to invest to make these programs happen. With the support of Ochi and the Regents, dual enrollment, CTE, and two-year campus opportunities, we'll continue creating more opportunities for MUS students. And we're working with the Commissioner and their staff, and the staff, and the Department of Corrections to bring the Second Chance Pell Grants to Montana, which reduces recidivism in our corrections institutions and offers folks another shot at success. Offering Montanans who need additional workforce training in non-traditional environments helps us fill the gaps in underserved populations and better prepares them to prosper as self-sufficient, fully-contributing members of our communities. We want every Montana to reach their full potential, and educational options are the key. That's one of the reasons that Montana will be reaffirming our state's 25-year partnership with the Western Governors University next month. The Montana university system does an excellent job of preparing students to successfully enter the workforce and earn good-paying jobs, but MUS can't do it alone. Trusted partners like WGU ensure all of Montana's non-traditional students receive training they need to fill the gaps in our skilled labor workforce. I'm also thrilled by President Cruzado's announcement about the newly-named Mark and Robin Jones College of Nursing at MSU, well done. Montana has long faced a healthcare worker shortage with an increasingly aging population, rapid, no one in this room, of course, is aging, but, and rapid population group growth and aging healthcare workforce, this is a problem, and this will take a big step towards filling this gap. The investment in the new Mark and Robin Jones College of Nursing will help us in that regard. I'm also pleased that we recently broke ground on not one, but two medical schools here in Montana, the first medical schools in the state with dedicated campuses. Again, options are key, and we need more of the above. So, these remain, the following three things remain my top priorities for education in Montana. Number one, continuing to address the underlying costs of education so that students can enter the workforce faster, with less debt, by increasing on-time graduation, I know you've been working on that, and reinventing the classroom to fundamentally change our cost structure by adopting innovative, new ways to do classroom. Second, expanding public-private partnerships with programs like Accelerate Montana and Build Montana to better meet the needs of students and Montana employers. And thirdly, increasing options for education across the board for both traditional and non-traditional students, both in the classroom and online, in both synchronous and self-paced asynchronous formats. The ultimate goal is to help every Montana student reach their full potential and meet them where they are, with education and training tailored to their needs and those of the marketplace. I know we can accomplish these goals by working together. Everyone wins when we provide our kids the tools they need to thrive, and I'm thankful for your partnership in this mission. Football games are won with three-to-five-yard plays, and working together, I think we've moved the chains a couple of times, and we've put some points on the board. Also, at football games, you keep score. And our administration set a goal in this calendar year of creating an environment where the economy in Montana will create a minimum of 10,000 new jobs over $50,000 a year. And I'm pleased to report, through the first six months of this year, we're right on track. We were just over 5,000 jobs created in the first six months of this year, and these are providing opportunities for Montanans to come home and Montanans that are here to prosper. So, I know with your help, we can accelerate this job growth. Education's a key component in connecting the dots and helping people to brighter futures. Before I close, I just want to mention one last thing. There's a couple upcoming appointments of both the Board of Public Education and the Regents early next year, and although I have literally thousands of appointments to make, these two boards play a critical role in our state's future, and I'd like your input on this. Who should we appoint? If you have nominations, suggestions, comments, please reach out to myself, the Lieutenant Governor, who leads my nominations efforts, or Dylan, if you have recommendations or questions. As always, don't hesitate to reach out to me for anything, my door is always open, and it's a pleasure to be here with you today. And Dylan, our next order of business, the Board of Regents Strategic Plan Update. Chair?
Oh, thank you, Governor, and good afternoon, everybody, and on behalf of the University of Montana and the Board of Regents, I'd like to welcome you, Governor Gianforte, and the Board of Public Ed to the University of Montana, and certainly thank President Bodnar for hosting the Board this last couple of days and hosting the Board of Ed today. So, thank you, President Bodnar. It's great to have everyone here and to be able to share this wonderful campus with our K-12 partners. Together, this group forms the State Board of Ed, an entity that holds a unique place in the Montana Constitution. As a group, this board is responsible for long-range education planning for the state of Montana and for, and as the Constitution says, we're coordinating and evaluating policies and programs for the state's educational system. Nearly 50 years ago, the delegates to the Montana Constitution recognized the value of a board that comes together collectively to discuss issues impacting the entire spectrum of education in Montana, from the very beginning with our youngest learners to the highest levels of professional training. This is a, this is an incredible responsibility that I know none of us here take lightly. As Regents, we've had a very productive meeting here in Missoula over the past day and a half, and I just wanted to share a few highlights. First, during the month, during the same month in which we celebrate the rich history and culture of American Indians and Alaska natives, it is perhaps fitting to share that we made some incredibly impressive strides towards improving both access and retention and completion rates for our American Indian students in Montana. Data from this fall shows that overall, the Montana university system, American Indian student enrollment has increased by 8% over last year. What's more is, we've also saw a nearly 8% increase in retention rates, which means we're doing a better job of holding on to these students. This is just incredibly exciting news, and while there's more of that work to be done, the progress is real, and it's substantial, and it's been strategic here in the Montana university system. President Bodnar shared some stats to kick off our meeting yesterday. American Indian enrollment has increased nearly 25% on this campus, so kudos to you, President Bodnar. Along with these efforts across the system to support a culture of success and inclusion for our American Indian students, including, which includes having dedicated physical spaces such as American Indian Hall that recently opened at Montana State University. I'm just so pleased to also report that we've made great strides towards improving our tribal college transfer pathways for tribal college students coming into our system. And recently, on the Nakota Tribal College and the Fort Belknap Reservation, and Stone Child College on the Rocky Boy Reservation, joined the Montana university system in our Common Course Numbering Program, which after nearly 10 years, to have two additional tribal colleges working with us is really, really exciting news. It'll help students as they move into the Montana university system to have an ease in that transition. I'd also like to share another update from our Resident Student Access Initiative, which is a number-one priority for this board. This year, we had more students than ever apply to the Montana university system campuses by using our Apply Montana portal and the central application for Montana. Apply MT is a web-based platform where Montana resident students interested in pursuing an undergraduate education can conveniently apply to any Montana university system institution without an application fee. Just this year alone, we saved Montanans $500,000 by making the application free. I'm happy to report, too, that over 9,000 applications were submitted this year, and that College Access Week was an incredible, incredible success. I'd like to extend my gratitude on behalf of the Board of Regents to Superintendent Aronson and the Office of Public Instruction for supporting this effort, as you've done for many years, and for helping us ensure that high school students know about higher education opportunities in Montana, regardless if they're two-year community college or are four-year institutions. The other side of this Resident Student Access Initiative is the Career and College Readiness Portal. It's near completion, which will be really a significant milestone for the MUS, a project we've been, we've prioritized as Regents over the past couple of years. The portal will provide specific information on careers and how students can meet those career objectives through the, through MUS education. It will also serve as a unified resource for Montana residents on educational opportunities all throughout the university system. We know that information is powerful, and we want students to be empowered with all the information they need to achieve their goals here in higher education in the state. I'd also like to share, we had a great discussion about scaling up an exciting new project in the university system known as Montana 10. This is a pilot project that aims to fundamentally transform how we deliver on the promise of higher education in Montana. By focusing on 10 evidence-based, comprehensive support strategies in areas where students have the most need, we believe we can substantially move the needle on student retention, and we've seen some exciting results so far. This year alone, we saw a 16% retention gain from fall to spring in the Montana 10 cohort as compared to the non-Montana 10 participants. Our discussion this week centered on how we can scale up this success to impact a larger group of students across the university system. We're really, really excited about the potential of this project, and we will certainly keep this group updated as we see progress at future meetings. In the meantime, we are continuing with our strategic initiatives to increase resident student access, support innovation and workforce development, and provide a healthy Montana university system with a renewed focus on mental health and addressing the impacts of the pandemic. There is much more I could say about all the exciting work that is happening in the university system, but given our limited time with each other today, I'll end my remarks and hand it back to you, Governor Gianforte.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair Lozar. And now, Public Board of Education Strategic Update, Chair Tammy Lacy.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Governor, Regents, Commissioner Christian, Superintendent Artson, colleagues. I see many of my colleagues out there in the audience and guests. It's good to be here with you today. My name is Tammy Lacy, and I am honored to be the Chair of the Board of Public Education for the state of Montana. This is the last part of an excellent three days of meetings for us, for the Board. We've had three very full days, our agendas were very tight, but we did a lot of good work in our meetings over the last three days, looking at teacher licensure, looking at accreditation, looking at our educational prep programs, looking at individual cases of teachers so that we can get them into our classrooms, and making a lot of decisions on behalf of the students of the state of Montana, which is what our work is really about. So, it's been a great, a great three days. I did want to share just a little bit of a highlight. We had the opportunity to tour three Missoula County public school programs that we often, you know, we sit at these tables, but we don't have the time to go out and actually see what is happening out in our schools, and we had excellent tours. We had an opportunity to visit the Early Learning Center, children three to five-year-old getting a great start on their education there and having their individualized needs met, very exciting. We went to the Willard Alternative Program, and these are students who need a different way to learn. They need a different opportunity, and that's provided there in Willard, and some great life stories of the students who go to school there. And lastly, we went to a hidden gem that I had not, had no idea that it even existed, and that is the Missoula County Public School Egg Center and Meat Processing Plant. Missoula County Public School has 100 acres that students farm and learn on, on a daily, year-round basis as part of the school district offerings that they have. We talk about workforce development, and you can't hardly even get a beef butchered without getting an appointment to do so into the future, and here we are in Missoula, training high school students to learn the skill of meat processing. So, Rob Watson, I believe, is here, there's Rob, I see him there. Just want to thank you for your incredible hospitality and for keeping programs like that, and we have other superintendents here that have programs too, but keeping programs like that alive for our students. And let's not keep them a secret, let's continue to show them and express the great work that our students and teachers and educators are doing out there. We also met this morning over at the Phyllis Washington Education Center, and I'd like to thank President Bodnar for hosting us over there. We had a long meeting this morning, a long, emotional meeting, when you have the opportunity or have a request to look at a teacher's license and to consider whether that license should be suspended and whatnot, and to listen to the stories of our educators and our school districts and the challenges that they're having out there. So, it was an emotional morning, so we're really glad to be here and ending our day in this really positive way. So, thank you so much for having us. I'm thankful that our meeting today is focused on the future and the educational plans for it. As mentioned, the Constitution by Chair Lozar, and also the law, that is what this body is supposed to do. Under Montana Codes annotated 20-2-101, the State Board of Education shall be responsible for long-range planning and for coordinating and evaluating policies and programs for the public educational systems of the state. So, here we are, looking about the, talking about the future, looking to the future while we celebrate the past, so very exciting. The only way we can coordinate is to have a good understanding of what members of the Board of Ed are working on, so this is our day to do that. So, thank you, Governor, for the update, the work of your office, and thank you, Chair Lozar, for that update. I also believe that sunshine on our goals and plans and dreams for public education are vital as we work for public education in Montana. The public has a right to know what we're doing, what we're up to, and what we're working on, so this is one way to make that happen. I'm excited to share with you that the Board of Public Education's hot-off-the-press strategic plan, I'm going to share that with you today, and I say "hot-off-the-press," I mean that, just on Wednesday, we voted unanimously to adopt our new strategic plan. We've been working on it over the last six months, really trying to make it be relevant for our work and to move it from what used to be called a five-year plan to a strategic plan, because it really should involve strategies to accomplish the goals that we have set forth. At our September meeting, we reviewed the draft and then updated it on this last, at our meeting on Wednesday. So, I was told that it was going to be up, so it's not. So, unfortunately, we'll read a little bit, but I'll try to kind of make it a little light and not read every single word, but try to give you a gist of what we're working on. The mission statement that we have landed on as the Board of Public Ed is this. "The Board of Public Education has a mission statement as directed by the Montana Constitution which states that there is a Board of Public Education to exercise general supervision over the public school system and such other public educational institutions as may be assigned by law." So, we further define that as that the Board of Public Ed was established to supervise, serve, maintain, and strengthen Montana's system of free, quality public elementary and secondary schools. And I can tell you that the board members who sit before you today take that charge and that mission extremely seriously as we do our work. We also have the smallest state agency, the Board of Public Ed, we have three employees that work for us, they also They also take that mission statement very seriously in the work that they do. We have Chris Stockton, who is here today as our administrative assistant. McCall Flynn is available via Zoom, and they work hard to help us bring our mission to fruition. We have six broad goals that we'll be working on as the Board of Public Education, and I'm just going to briefly read them, and then I will highlight a couple of the strategies that we have listed below them. The first goal is to exercise the Board's constitutional and statutory authority to improve Montana's education system. Again, that supervising, serving, maintaining, and strengthening is part of that statutory authority, and we will work with legislators, education partners, and other entities to ensure that we take that seriously and move it forward. Our second strategic goal is to promote a safe learning environment. We know that students and teachers can't learn and work unless they feel that they are safe and supported in their educational institution, so we'll work with educational partners to help school districts navigate the variety of federal and state regulations and funding and other aspects in order to provide a safe environment. An example of this was just yesterday, we went through the new bus and transportation standards, and we have updates to those. Bus safety is absolutely part of that, and we really thank the Office of Public Instruction for their partnership in supporting, making sure that we are reflective of current thinking around all kinds of safety issues, so thank you for that. The third goal is to evaluate and adopt the Board's accreditation standards to ensure they are contemporary and effective to improve quality education for all Montana students. We have several items underneath that, but we just want to reiterate our commitment to rigorous standards and assessments for our students, but also support flexibilities within the current frameworks so that all students can reach their maximum potential. An example of work that we're doing around this is just yesterday, we adopted the Chapter 55, which outlines the accreditation standards, the timeline moving forward for updating those standards. So again, we partner with OPI to do some of the heavy lifting behind that work, but ultimately, it will be the Board's responsibility to approve those accreditation standards that set the bar for schools all across the state and what they need to be doing to meet those standards. The fourth goal is to foster quality teaching and administration. We all know that the adults in the school and how they operate and who they are and the skills that they have often and many times are very important in determining the outcomes for our children. So again, this is an important goal for us. We'll be working with legislators and other entities to ensure they understand the Board's role in that. We adopt revisions of administrative rules of Montana to make sure that we have authority in order to make sure that we have that quality teaching administration. We'll work with partners in K-12 and higher education, our educator prep programs in particular, to coordinate recruitment and retention efforts of teachers, staff, and school leaders, very important piece of our work. And what we're hearing the most from our practitioners out in the field is retention and recruitment of staff, all staff, kitchen staff, bus drivers, aides, playground people, crossing guards, all staff is very difficult, like most industries, so we need to work hand-in-hand with school districts to help solve that problem. And then we also have a Certification Standards Practices Advisory Panel that brings to us issues as well, and we try to address those as we can. The fifth goal: Support the preparation of all Montana students for employment, post-secondary education, and civic life. And that's where we all fit together as part of the work that we have to do, to support and expand pathways to career and life success using innovative programs like the Montana Digital Academy to support different modalities for learning, like online learning, plan and prepare, all of our meetings and agendas, so P-20 priorities are set forth and that we can work together on that unified budget, and then also ensure that we receive guidance from the Montana Advisory Council for Indian Education, which really brings us important information from our Native American students and our Native American schools so that we can make sure that we have policies and practices in place to support their needs as well. And lastly, some people may not know this, but we are the Board for the Montana School for the Deaf and Blind. And so our last goal is to recognize and fulfill our statutory obligations to MSDB. Happens to be right in my backyard in Great Falls, and it's always my pleasure to be able to go there and to see our Montanans, deaf and blind children, and the individualized and excellent education that they are receiving there. Right now, we have one major job ahead of us, and that is to hire a permanent superintendent for MSDB. We are in the process of that. The job has been posted, and we'll close on January 1st. Think about the kind of person that is to be the superintendent of a school for the deaf and blind. We had several listening sessions over the last month or so, and I basically summed it up as we need somebody who can walk on water. It's a tremendous responsibility. Parents send their children there to live, and they get to go home about once every six weeks, and entrust their children, their living and their educational experience and all of that to MSDB, and it's just an incredible responsibility and an incredible gift to be able to work with those students and with their families. So we will do our best to find the best person to work there and to do that and to serve those children. They also have about 150 different sites all across the state where they provide outreach to hard-of-hearing and low-vision students. So that seems so easy, right? It was just one and a half pages, but so much work that is to be done here on behalf of Montana's children, and we just are very honored and happy to be able to do that work. I'm going to end with what Winston Churchill said, and he said, "However beautiful the strategy, you should occasionally look at the results." And we have to make sure that we do that, and that will also be part of our agendas as we move through. I promise that we'll be closely monitoring our strategies for success and in turn adding and modifying as we move forward. I just thank you for this opportunity, and as we have comments later, if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and want to publicly thank our board for their excellent work. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Lacy. Never apologize for a short strategic plan. It was Mark Twain that said, "I'm sorry this letter to you is so long, I didn't have enough time to write a short one."
Perfect.
So my motto was, "If it doesn't fit on one page, you haven't thought about it enough."
Yeah, well, it would fit on one with a smaller font, but it was pretty special.
No, you did great. You did great.
Thank you.
At this time, our next agenda item, we want to recognize our Teacher of the Year, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Aronson.
Thank you. Thank you, Governor. For the record, State Superintendent Elsie Aronson, what a great opportunity with such an esteemed body who is partnering and working together. So with no further ado, Mr. Bill Stockton from Arley, 12 years in Arley, a science teacher, and has risen to the top as the Montana Teacher of the Year. But everyone here, we all recognize all of those great teachers that are in all of our communities across our state, so behind him is a multitude. With that, Mr. Stockton, some great words.
I just want to thank you guys for honoring me here today. I wasn't expecting to have to speak, so I didn't plan anything, but I think it's important that we have a common voice for all the educators in Montana. Everyone in here wants what's best for all students, and I think one of the ways that we do that is really stress the importance of building relationships from a teacher-to-student level and from teachers to teachers. Currently, there's a lot of worry about teacher retention and all of these things, and I think ways the universities can help in that is really looking at mentorship programs that go beyond graduation and how we can support those teachers when they're in their first, second, third year of teaching, especially in rural Montana where you're very isolated. I think with our students, especially our students that don't see themselves as the normal student in your classroom, they need an advocate, and we need teachers that are willing to be advocates for them at all times. And I think that through proper relationship building and teaching educators how to reach out to those students, we can help them. You mentioned those statistics about depression and suicide rates, and those are disproportionately affecting our lower socioeconomic students, our students of color, and we need to make sure that we have educators in those positions that are willing to reach out to them and help them and build those strong, meaningful relationships. So I'm excited to be a common voice for our teachers in Montana and spread all of the amazing things that we're doing here. We have a lot of great programs that are already in place and things that we could slightly tweak, I think, that would make those programs better, but it's very, very humbling to be in this position because as Superintendent Aronson mentioned, there's a lot of amazing educators in this room and in Montana, so I hope I can do everybody a justice and spread the good word of all the things that we're already currently doing here, and thank you guys so much.
And Bill, thank you. Great words. What you're going to do is going to be very courageous as we come out of this pandemic and supporting all of our teachers and the teachers that are sitting in those seats right now that are in pre-service. So think of what we can do as we build Montana and make us proud. So Governor and Chair of the Board, Chair of the Regents, Commissioner, and esteemed members, I'm, again, just overwhelmed, and we can't do this alone. One person can't do what we have to do in front of us. Whatever is in charge of us with our statutes, whatever we have in our constitution, we must partner, we must work together. And I am imploring right now that we do this with civility, that we do this with a mind of moving forward, being positive, seeking solutions rather than uncovering and sharing, going backward. We must move forward, and I know we can. I mean, think of the great opportunities that we have ahead of us. We have come out of a health crisis. We are moving forward to support the great teachers like Mr. Stockton, to support the administrators like we have here in Missoula County Public School that showed us great opportunities and flexibilities. Every single one of those programs that we witnessed, that Dr. Watson shared with us yesterday, was for personalized, individualized learning because we know in Montana, our communities are unique, and one size does not fit all from the federal government and of our policymakers we're here, also from our state statutes, so we have to be flexible. So with that, Governor, I'd just like to really share the flexibilities in our licensing system. We were very honored that we received $13.5 million of $0.6 billion coming from the congressional action through the American Rescue Plan, and we are in the process of an RFP. What this is, is just going to be a simple portal that will be ease of licensing, whoever these teachers are, to make sure that with the Board of Public Ed, that we do have a bar of quality. We want the best in our classrooms. My grandchildren deserve the best, as all of our children do. But also with that portal, professional development will also be given to teachers, the mentorship program that you spoke about, and I know it has been in all of the discussions that we've had, looking at that licensing chapter, but also giving them the opportunity to work together in a cohort of teachers wherever they may teach across our state. I know, Regents, we heard about some great opportunities for mental health, we heard about some wonderful opportunities for rural residencies this morning as well. We have great leadership, but to allow our teachers to know these things, that's what that is going to happen with this flexibility. We will be up and running by May. Between May and August is when we recertify and license about 5,000 teachers. We're going to get out of paper, go to digital, be great in service to whoever, wherever teachers are going to be. Very excited about this. I could not do this without the great people at the OPI and, of course, in the partnership with the Board of Public Ed. I also want to say with your most recent actions and allowing, that one size doesn't fit all even in licensing, and allowing those great teachers to have the availability to come into our Montana classrooms with unusual cases. Thank you for listening. Thank you for taking your time and understanding the uniqueness of every single one of those licensees because we are unique as adults as we serve our unique children. The medical school, oh, gosh, Governor, you spoke about this and the great opportunity, two different models in two different locations. What a wonderful opportunity and flexible to put K-12 not necessarily on a footprint of that campus, but to be there. What a great opportunity because in medical education, it could be anybody from administration all down to those that support in nursing. And President Crissato, so excited, yes, so excited for what is going to be happening across our state with the great gift that has been given to all Montanans and to make sure that K-12 has an opportunity to be part of this great gift, great gift. As more as the individual said, an investment. Let's invest in our K-12 education in a partnership. I also want to say with flexibilities that it is Native American Heritage Month, and thank you very much, Chair Lozar, for bringing that to your forefront of your kind words. You know, this is Thanksgiving as well, so we have a lot to be grateful for. I am blessed that I house beautiful, beautiful people who have been working diligently in our office, both in the realm of achievement but also in the realm of acknowledgement, you know, our indigenous history and who we were to support our children of who they're going to be. Yes, it's in our constitution, but it's in our hearts, and we're working to do this. So there's a lot of work that is happening at the Office of Public Instruction, Governor, and I'm very proud of the great work. One last thing I can also share, besides sharing employees, as you had mentioned, with Department of Labor, we're also sharing an employee with the Department of Administration. We are going to be seeking help from all of our school districts and our communities because I also serve on the State Library Commission because schools and libraries are the heart of our communities, to make sure that we have great broadband mapping for digital access, to come to what our constitution says, for equal access. So I'm very excited about a partnership, and again, Board of Regents, you've heard me talk about partnerships since I first came here in '17. We can't do this alone, we must do this together. Our state demands it, and our future does. With that, Governor, I'll stand for questions. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll move to discussion in a minute. Thank you, Superintendent. And Mr. Stockton, let me just add my congratulations on your excellence in the classroom and being recognized as the son of a public school math teacher, and now Susan and I have a daughter that's in the classroom teaching high school math as well. It's a noble profession, and I'm glad, on behalf of the whole state of Montana, just to thank you for stepping up and making a difference in these kids' lives. So it's great to be able to recognize you today. So with that, we're open for board member comments for the superintendent or anybody else. Who'd like to go first? Yes, Regent Neistat.
Thank you, Governor Gianforte. Yesterday, Deputy Commissioner Trevor provided us an enrollment update, especially with regards to graduating seniors from high school. And Tyler, if I get my numbers wrong, please jump in. But we have about 10,000 students that graduate from Montana high schools each year. Back in the year 2010, 61% of them went on to some type of college. That's good. It's down to 51 now. 12% go out of state, 28% come to the university system campus. When you throw in the tribals and the community college, it's 39. So half the students say, "I'm not going to go to college." As a former private sector guy retired, I find that trend to be most concerning, that we, I think, the people around this table, need to double down in our efforts to market and explain why some level of higher education beyond a K-12 diploma is so important. I think we're missing the boat, and all these ideas and strategic plans are great, but that was very telling yesterday. So Tyler, did I get my numbers right? Okay. And I'm sure that we'd be happy to provide a copy of this, it's only half a dozen slides, to all of you and say, "This needs to be a priority." During the Regents' meeting yesterday, we talked a lot about enrollment, and it's just not recruiting, it's the onboarding, and it's ultimately the success rates to not recruiting, it's the onboarding and it's ultimately the success rates to make sure that these students get across the stage each May with a diploma. But I think it all starts with the work that's done in the K-12 world. I understand the guidance counselors are perhaps overwhelmed. I know that you're a lot of times short, Superintendent Aronson, of qualified guidance counselors, but you know what? I think we can come up with a solution that's better than only half the students going on to some level of school after they graduate from high school. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Regent. It's a quiet group. Everybody's thinking about the...
Been talking for three days.
Now, okay, we could debate, is it cat grids or grids cat? No. Susie?
Gianforte, thank you. Just to piggyback off of that and off of your speech earlier, I just wanted to mention that jobs for Montana graduates is a great bridge for that as well because that can encourage students to apply for college and help students fill out those applications during that program. And I completely agree with you. I'd love to see it in more schools. I was a JMG graduate and had great experiences in that program. So I think that's a great, great idea. And then I know Board Member Heller is probably thinking the same thing as I am, but I'm interested in knowing how that rate would compare also with our apprenticeship programs and other opportunities to see if students are entering the trades more often or what the placement looks like for that other half of students that aren't going to higher ed. So that'd be something interesting to look into. Thank you.
Other comments? Yes. Board Member Heller.
Thank you, Governor. Thank you, Board of Regents. My fellow board member, Susie Headland, is correct. I am extremely passionate about the skilled trades. I'm extremely passionate about different forms of education. I'm going to give an example. We have a young man who graduated from Capital High School in the spring of 2020, when we were right in the middle of, you know, the first start of COVID. He had been trained and done so well in the automotive program at Capital. Did a great job there. I have to give a shout out to that instructor, Mr. Eric Croft, for preparing that young man for the workforce. He graduated, I believe, on a Saturday or maybe Sunday. I'm not sure when Capital has their, has their graduation ceremonies. He started work on Monday, working for a auto dealership in Helena. His higher ed is training through that dealership. So this is a young man who had the work ethic, had the learning attitude and had the skills to take right out of high school and walk right into a full-time, extremely viable and wonderful career. He's doing extremely well at the dealership. They have sent him onto their own trainings, their own certifications. So while I think that two-year colleges, our community colleges, tribal colleges and four-year universities are important in, in some fields, I do not want to forget that there are other forms of education. And I think we need to take a serious look at those. I think we need to exalt those and help all avenues and help train our K-12 students and our advisors and our teachers for whatever form of education they decide to take after high school. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Other comments? Discussion? Yes.
Thanks, Governor. Thanks, everybody, for joining in this afternoon. What a great task, right, to elevate the opportunities for young people. After our last meeting, where we identified, I think, a shared strategy goal or a shared priority in dual credit and CTE efforts, our staff has put together a report kind of identifying a baseline, where we're at, how many campuses, at which level, A, B, AA, is doing dual credit and then how much of that is CTE. Our hope, and I've just recently submitted a request to Superintendent Aronson's office to help us canvas the rest of the campuses around the K-12 system to identify where do we have CTE investments and have yet to link the dual credit opportunities. Not the dual credits, the only thing that could come out of this, right? Getting some kids some carpentry skills while they're in K-12, preparing those skillsets are absolutely wonderful. So we'll pass that data and would look for help in gathering and identifying the campuses that currently do have CTE facilities on campus that we've yet to, to dive in on the, on the CTE side. And to your point, Governor, it's about focusing fundling to the right, to the workforce needs. So the Department of Labor and your office is certainly a part of that, but we, we heard the conversation and that is definitely a shared priority among all of us and excited to start digging into that. Thank you.
This is great ground for collaboration between these two boards. So, good. Other comments? Yes. Regent Sexton.
Thank you, Governor. Just listening on some of the conversations and particularly paying attention to your priorities, I wanted to speak a little bit about transaction costs and kind of where these two groups can come together to help reduce those because really one of the best ways you can try to capture more of a market is to reduce those transaction costs. And that's where I feel that the Apply Montana portal is so important is because it brings forward the information that students need and potential students need. I'm a non-traditional student. I was definitely of a mindset that, you know, I'm just going to go straight into the workforce. I don't need an education and, you know, it took me some time to see the benefit of that education. But when I was doing that, I was doing all that work myself. I had to do all the research myself. And now there is, looking at the portal, I'm jealous I didn't have that when I was doing all this research. So it really brings forward all of the, you know, data for potential jobs, internships. And I think that's so crucial right now because the opportunity cost of going to school is, in my opinion, higher than tuition. So when you look at the fact that anyone can go and get a job and make, you know, 20 bucks an hour, that's really hard to combat. Even though I think the benefit of education is higher than that cost, we have to be able to communicate that to people. And I think, I, I think we're on the right track to do that. I really do. And I, I feel that the apprenticeship program is really important because students need multiple avenues to pursue their education. They don't, I didn't want to give up my job and go and pursue a degree. So I feel positive with some of the tools we've been looking at, but I agree with you that partnership is the way forward. How can we reduce those transaction costs? How can we increase the benefit to students?
Yeah, that's very good. Just before this, I was over at Blackfoot Communications and they have, they've been very aggressive in using apprenticeships. They've used it both in accounting and also in IT. And I met a, a young gal over there who was a student at Missoula College. She went to class in the morning. She worked at Blackfoot in the afternoon. She earned money to pay for school. She had a baby in the middle of it and now she's got a full-time job in the accounting department. All right, so apprenticeships make graduation more achievable. The other, one other note I'll just make briefly is we took some action this last legislative session to give local school boards the ability to create alternative work experiences in lieu of core curriculum requirement. So if there's a local employer who might be able to take some high school students and do some three hours a week or something, instead of being in a class for 52 minutes, they could spend a stint at the employer once a week and get alternative credit for graduation if that experience is approved by the local school board. So it's just, it's another tool we put in the box. It won't be the right thing for every community, but we'd love to have you, see you pursue that more. Yes.
Thank you, Governor. Just one more thing I want to make sure I address, especially since it is our Heritage Month, like you said, Native American Heritage Month. I am the liaison for the Montana Advisory Council for Indian Education and I just want to thank all of you and your colleagues for the partnership that we have in that incredible work. And I'm just proud to be a part of the great education in one of the states that leads the way in, in Indian education. And Jennifer Smith, our colleague in Billings and is our board chair for the MACI Committee that is part of the Board of Public Education. So I just wanted to thank the university systems and our, all of our partners for that partnership as well.
Great, thank you. Yes. Board Member Heller.
Thank you. Thank you, Governor. One just last quick comment I would like to make. I do believe that there are all of the pieces and the ingredients within, between K-12 and, and our higher ed system. I think there's, those ingredients are there for what we were just talking about with the different avenues of, of higher education. The problem I have seen in my experience is the silo mentality. So I, I love the fact that the Board of Education is working collaboratively and plans to work collaboratively with Board of Regents, Higher Education, Dual Credit. There's a lot of pieces. Build Montana is an excellent example. And then with, with private sectors kind of working on, and I believe that that is something that is being seriously looked at through the Department of Industry and bringing in the private sector. But we cannot forget that we have agencies within the K-12 system that are in place that I think we need to pull in as well. And I'm, I'm referring to our career and technical student organizations like Skills USA, TSA, BPA. So I think bringing, breaking down those silos and bringing all of those together, working collaboratively with each other, so we are not only preparing our students for amazing careers, whatever they decide to do, whether it's medical or driving a piece of equipment to build our roads, whatever that looks like, I'm more than happy to work with you and be a part of that conversation. And then of course, it helps build Montana. And I don't mean to give the Montana contractors kudos there, but I love their phrase. Build Montana is what we're trying to do here and we want to keep our kids here in our state so they can work hard and then enjoy our, our wonderful state. So I'm more than happy to work with you on that.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion items? If not, I'll go to public comment. Is there any one member of the public that would like to make a comment or? Yeah, welcome up to the podium. Please state your name and...
Sounds as though this is on.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Governor, and members of the Board of Education. For the record, my name is Dennis Parman. I'm the Executive Director of the Montana Rural Education Association, but this afternoon I'm before you representing my colleagues from the Montana Public Education Center. They are the Montana Association for School Business Officials, the Montana Federation of Public Employees, the Montana Quality Education Coalition, our organization, MRAEA, the Montana School Boards Association and the School Administrators of Montana. Over the past 10 months, there's been a growing clamor among school leaders, trustees and administrators alike and business officials, which today is at a fever pitch. The overarching concern is having reasonable expectation of getting timely and helpful information and technical assistance from the Office of Public Instruction. An OPI staffing report was presented to the Board of Public Education late yesterday afternoon. That report spoke to just over 154 FTE, which we all know is not the equivalent to employees. But the presenter later noted that there are just over 202 employees that work at the Office of Public Instruction. When we compare what was reported by an investigative article published by the Montana Free Press a couple of short weeks ago, what we received in the report yesterday from the Office of Public Instruction and information that we had received from within the Office of Public Instruction, there were 51 vacant positions. Clearly, the accurate picture of vacant positions at the Office of Public Instruction is abundantly unclear. We know that the fact, we, we know that the fact that the Chief Data Officer will work his last day next Friday will, was not reflected in any reports. This individual was responsible for leading the project to upgrade and coordinate the data system, systems at the Office of Public Instruction, which has been noted earlier, was funded through the legislature with ESF funds and the signature to the Governor to the amount of 13 and a half million dollars. And a half million dollars is my understanding has been spent towards the system to manage the licensure unit. We found out late yesterday afternoon that yet another senior staff member submitted their letter of resignation and their last day will be December 3rd. And finally, it's been our understanding that the Human Resources Manager also will be finished with his duties on December 3rd, leaving a half-time FTE clerical person. Regardless of what the accurate number of vacant positions is at the Office of Public Instruction, from what we've heard from the field, it's just too high. And when we couple the potential vacancies with the departure of the HR manager, we can only come to one conclusion. Despite the hard work of all of those who are still employed at the Office of Public Instruction, we have no reason to expect that the agency will be able to even begin to turn this circumstance into a meaningful, positive direction in the coming months. Meanwhile, the needs of trustees and administrators and school business officials continues. I'm not here to make a request and in fact, we've not made a request of any state agency and don't plan to do that. Rather, we're here to let you all know that because of the concern raised to us by our memberships, our collective memberships, we feel compelled to collectively secure expert assistance for our members, fill in the gaps, providing legal assistance where needed, particularly in federal programs, and offered experienced expertise and legal assistance dealing with state mandated programs such as accreditation, school finance and educator licensure. In the past five years, due to the staff turnover and shortages at the Office of Public Instruction, we find ourselves increasingly called upon by our members to step in to provide technical assistance and particularly in those three areas. In closing, we want to recognize the hard work of the employees at the Office of Public Instruction and their dedication and commitment to providing service to those who need their service or their assistance. But that number has continued to dwindle and the burden on those dedicated employees remaining has continued to grow. I thank you very much, Governor, for the opportunity to make these remarks. I thank all of you for your service to Montana.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Good afternoon, Governor, and members of the Montana Board of Education. For the record, my name is Kirk Miller and I come to you as I did two months ago as a 40-year educator in Montana, having served in six different communities, a father and a grandfather. And I just might add that two, two of my kids are, are teachers at this point and one of my, my youngest son lives right here in Missoula. He, and he's in the Electrical Apprenticeship Program, working productively and registered at MSU Northern in the progress. So much of the discussion that you've had hits very personally with my family. My grandchildren are also in Montana Public Schools. I'm a past member of the Montana Board of Public Education, having served 14 years under three governors and would recognize that a couple of my colleagues from the Board of Education are continuing to serve. Commissioner Christian was a member of the Regents during my time on the Board of Public Education and Regent Buchanan is back for a second, second round on, on the Board of Regents. So just some foundational, but here today, I want to let you know that I'm representing the Montana Public Education Center, which again, I'll reemphasize is the Montana Association of School Business Officials, the Montana Federation of Public Employees, the Montana Quality Education Coalition, the Montana Rural Education Association, Montana School Boards Association and School Administrators of Montana. I also serve as the Executive Director of School Administrators of Montana. As referenced about two months ago, on September 16th, I attended your meeting, attended the meeting of the Board of Education, pointing out the challenges that have been imposed on schools and our communities due to the polarization of the pandemic. And I made a request of our local communities and our education leaders, including the Board of Education, to rise up and protect the ability of our schools to serve every community across our state with high-quality responsive services for our children. Two months later, I'm very happy to report to you that we have done our part and you have done your part to promote the value of our schools and communities all across the state of Montana. We focused on four essential truths in those districts and I'll reemphasize as I did that two months ago, that our community schools are the safe, healthy centers for our children to engage in their academic, social, emotional wellbeing, brain health and whole child learning. Our community schools are a major driver in the economic viability of all communities across... across the state. In most communities, our public schools are a large employer, if not the largest employer in the community, and the employment of our neighbors, those that are serving as educators, support staff, bus drivers, custodians, paraprofessionals, educators, the whole team, all working together to meet the educational needs of our children in every community. The collective economic impact of the school on the school, of all of those who work in the school, is significant to the economic health of all of our communities across the state. Third essential truth is that truly our community schools are at the heart of the community, is a place where our towns gather, where our citizens socialize, where we work together to create that wonderful atmosphere and the wonderful life for our children and for us as Montanans. And last, I would say that this is pretty readily available, that the pride that exists in our communities across the state of Montana is fostered when our Montanans engage to support our children and their growth and development through supporting their successes in academics, the arts, activities, athletics, in every community across the state of Montana. One will only need to stand next to the football field, or on the sideline of the football field, at a state championship game tonight in AA, or those on Saturday that are being played, or have been at the Fieldhouse in Bozeman for the all-class volleyball tournament, to understand what pride of community means, and where our schools, where our community schools have a real responsibility in the development of that pride. I would add to the success of what I've just described, is that the Montana Public Education Center worked together to publish the great work of Montana's public schools, and I have submitted this public comment electronically, so all of you will have a copy of this. It was released on October 21 with those four components and strategies in place, and the data showing the strong support of our public schools among Montana voters. This statewide information about the great work happening in our schools can be used by each and every school and community to help them tell the local story, as has been described here, the Missoula story has been told, to this very board and tours that happened throughout. That same thing could be replicated in every single community across the state of Montana. I want to thank everybody who was responsible for all of the information that ended up in the great work of Montana's public schools. Unfortunately, polarization of issues relating to our schools has continued. Even more unfortunate is that some political leaders are contributing to this trend. The harm of this misguided, vitriolic, and angry approach is not only creating an inappropriate example for our children on how to resolve complicated issues, but is instilling a counterproductive culture of mistrust, harming the ability of our community schools to recruit and retain quality educators and support staff to meet the needs of our children and develop the full potential of each child in every public school. The harm to the success of our public schools and successfully recruiting and retaining high-quality educators and support team should be of grave concern to all Montanans. This very board and other boards have done extensive work on the recruitment and retention of educators, and right now, I think I could tell you that the atmosphere that's being created, I would be concerned that the greatest cause for harm for that retention issue especially is the atmosphere that's being worked in and what's been described as the movement out of the education profession to do other things. We respectfully request that our political leaders refrain from further second-guessing of local decision-making and cease instigating vitriol and anger directed toward our Montana public schools. Our public school leaders need empathy, encouragement, and support of their extraordinary efforts to provide the safest, most effective learning environments for our children throughout Montana. By working together, sorting out differences of opinion, ensuring a voice for students and families in each community, we can all work together to protect the value that our public schools bring to each community and ensure that the preservation of a tradition of community ownership and local control that provides much benefit to our way of life as Montanans. And I want to close with my deepest gratitude to every one of you who serve on the Board of Education for your commitment, for your service, for your heart, and for your great efforts to ensure that all citizens of Montana are provided with the very best education that we can have, because it is essential to our way of life in Montana. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there any other public comment? Hearing none. The next order of business is to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving and adjourn for a football game. Thank you for being here today.